This conference will now be recorded.
Good afternoon. It's Tuesday, January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. This is the regular January meeting of the Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees. We're meeting in meeting room C of the library main. My name is Steve Emming, president of the Board of Trustees, and I'd like to call this meeting. First item on the agenda is roll call. Malavika Shrikanthi, present. Sylvia Roba.
Here, yeah.
Amanda Motto.
Here.
Judy Lance.
Here.
Joe Heinrichs.
Here.
Tom Engelmann.
Here.
And Craig Cooper and Laura Guinness are not with us, but maybe later we'll come back to that. That's very, and my name is Steve Emming, and I'm present. So we have a forum, and I'd like to also introduce other attendees. First, Jeff Collins, library director. Jennifer Williams, HR Operations Manager. Tracy Moore, Development Officer. Steph Marvin, Customer Services Supervisor. Jerry Skelak, friend, friends of the library president. And let me see, Marion McGinnis, Council Liaison, and Casey Shipley, Recorder. Okay, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I still move, Steve.
Sorry.
Thank you, Malavika and Tom. I have a motion as second to approve the consent agenda. There is discussion. So you now have a call for the vote. Of the motion to approve the consent agenda. Sylvia.
Yes.
Amanda.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Tom. My own vote is yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public with comment. Seeing and hearing no one, we'll move on. Next item is reports and communications. First item there is report from the friends.
Jerry. I'll take just one minute of your time. Probably one item, my term will be ending on a friend's board soon, and the board president and his board member. April annual meeting, the elections take place. We do have a very capable individual who'll probably step in as president, Heidi Luthen, who's been very active with the board. I'd like to believe she'll be elected without too much competition, even I doubt. And our treasurer will stay on her second term, I believe, which is always good news, kind of a key position anyways. And we also did identify an assistant treasurer at the last meeting, which had been vacant for a while, so that's even good news. Quick note about our investment accounts, we may be looking at going out for a request for proposal for management, just because it's a requirement in our financial management to do so. But that's kind of a long process to take that into consideration. We're quite happy with the current services being provided by Quadsy Bank and Trust at the same time to be diligent. Otherwise, in pretty good shape with respect to membership renewals, annual giving, et cetera. So that's probably all I got as far as anything new.
Yes, thank you. Certainly appreciate all you and the friends, Judy. For support to library. Friends of the library is always looking for new members and board members in particular. So if you know of anyone who would be a good friend of the library, please encourage them to join us. Join the board, become a friend.
When do they meet? The second Monday or second Tuesday of each month, so the week before this.
At noon.
Here at the library.
Next item on the, was any questions for Jerry? Next item under reports and communications is committee reports. First report there is finance, Tom.
Well, I mean, the budget recap, we're halfway through the year. And if you look at the various expense items, there are some that are over. A lot of them, I'm sure, are just timing issues. Overall, we're running right at fifty percent. So here we're right where we should be.
Any questions for Tom on finances? We'll move on. Next item under committee reports is personnel. Amanda, anything there?
Nothing to report from personnel.
Okay. Resting after a valuation. Appreciate how you do that.
Thank you.
Advocacy, oh, I'm sorry, are there any questions on? Okay. Next item under committee reports is advocacy.
I wanted to share with you all that we will have the DEI meeting, which I am liaison for the board, next week at four P M. And this time we are going to set new goals for the new year, share new ideas, that's our plan. And one of the items which I thought I would share with you all is I was going to bring up something about DEI and library Board of Trustees. I'm not just having a DEI member on it, but I had heard a few articles, so you know, plan to just share and we plan to talk. And I've shared the links with all of you as well. So that was one. This, this is something that had to do with the library, but I'm going to do it. This is this Saturday, I'm going to present an event at Easton. And it's for, I have not given the name, the instructions, so it's, I've given it. It's called Wyoming Indian, I'm going to cook Indian using local stuff, what I did in my, so that's what they wanted me to do. I'm going to do that, I'm excited. This Saturday at two P M. So there's something going, so anyway, so that's one. You seem a little dubious, but you know, I'm happy.
It will be awesome.
What do I do, Bill? Have some recipes to share, and I'm negative makeup, and all that, so it's gonna be fun.
So buy some steak?
It's gonna be palak chutney, cereals, chiva, it's gonna be fun. What I made when I was Wyoming and I was brand new and I needed some nice spicy food, and I had no place to go and buy. So, so how did I kind of improvise? So Bill said, do it, so we can all go and shop and get things and cook Indian. I said, okay, we'll do it. So this is this Saturday.
Two P M.
Two P M. End the kitchen there. So that's it. So the other thing is I wanted to share, thank you, Jeff, for sharing that intellectual freedom webinar link, because I really wanted something to learn. And that was a good way, so I registered for that. That was one. Lastly, I really wanted to thank this individual I have in. At our Fairmont Library, one is we have a new way of how the furniture has been arranged. It's brand new as well, it's like, you know, come on in, sit down, talk to me, get the book. I mean, it's just beautiful, you have to see it, experience it at Fairmont. So anyway, we were there during my daughter's holidays, we went to each library every time, we didn't want to go to one place. We looked at different libraries, and we got books and whatever we needed. And there was this young lady who is a T P L staff member, and I'm sorry, I forgot to get her name, because she was busy with this stuff, with a patron. But I wanted to share this with everybody. She was like a concierge, literally. I mean, you know, what do you want? Okay, I can take it here, with a blank inside. Oh, you don't want that? She went, I mean, it was like that, this is what I love, that energy, you know? And I want to be in a library, I want to sit down. A grandmother was waiting for her granddaughter. She, she said, oh, take your time, I'm right here. And this lady like jumping out, helping.
Yeah, it's too bad you don't have her.
I don't have her name, so I'm going to go back, I've written down the date and the times to see what, you know, to identify. So I will get back to you. I really, I really appreciate it. It was just, it was just wonderful what was happening. So that was that, last, absolute last, I'm going to plan the microgreens for free from our library, that's my plan. So we are now having microgreens right here, and I think we're doing a wonderful job. So Jeff, to you all here, thank you very much for opening such opportunities to people like all of us. This is important, so worth it.
See library?
See library, microgreen, I'll share photos. Thank you.
You're welcome. Will they be timed laps?
It's a good idea. I can do that. Yes. Just show the first part.
Yeah.
But I think that's a good idea, I will take you.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for Malavika? Two P M, Saturday at Easter.
Oh, gosh.
Wyoming Indian.
I have, I've given the name, yeah. It's a little strange.
Moving on, is the director's report, can you top that, Jeff?
Unlikely. Just a couple of things to bring your attention to. The first one, obviously, is the first item on the list, which is buying free. We were able to do that effective January third, thanks to, you know, leadership of the board, and we had really, really positive feedback across the board. I was able to include a couple of comments that we've received since going buy free. I was out on desk today and helped a patron, and she lit up when she realized that she didn't have to pay for any overdue fines. And that was, she expressed that that was a barrier to access before, she really overjoyed about it. And we're hearing a lot of anecdotal stories. So there were approximately nine thousand five hundred eighty-two patrons that were impacted that had overdue fines when we were able to implement amnesty. And five of the libraries and River Shore libraries did do that. And then also Rock Island went buy free as well. So really positive things in the Quad Cities with other libraries that are participating in that. We also launched our new catalog, which is called Vega Discover, and that one has had some mixed success so far, as far as feedback. It's tough to manage that kind of change for people that are used to think one way and then having to go to another way. The traditional catalog is still available for anybody that wants to use that. So those two are up and they're going to run concurrently for anybody that would like to use that, to help them with that transition. We had some issues with special collections, I think you noticed that in the report, kind of a three concurrents, we think. We're still assessing any potential damage, and then we'll also see if there's anything we can do in the future to stop, to prevent something like that from occurring again. Again, we think it was just a one-off three concurrents, so we don't know if there's anything necessarily that we could have put in place that would have changed the outcome, or would it make us do anything differently. It just kind of happened right around the holiday, while we weren't here for a while, and we still probably will respond to the same way as it kind of rectified itself and fixed the problem in terms of the moisture humidity and then the water showing up on the item. So we'll kind of see where things go with that. And then the other thing to just point out is I did join the Board of Directors, the American Red Cross, here locally, in this chapter. So I'll be serving on that board, and then we had a really great opportunity right off the bat to assist some of the households that were impacted by a park fire here in Davenport. Where fourteen families were displaced, and we were able to step in to fill that role, to be able, by vouchers, by partnering with Red Cross and with QCon as well. So we could provide those vouchers to some of those impacted families, so they can have housing for a couple of weeks at least, which is really cool.
Fantastic.
So those are just a couple of things to highlight. I'd be happy to answer any questions or concerns, any other comments about the report.
Lots of good comments, appreciate what you're doing, congratulations on being invited to the board of the American Red Cross. Great organization.
And thank you, Jeff, for the, you having included it here for the language, the email language, customer service. Thank you so very much for helping with that as well, so thanks a lot.
We've got a great team. Step right in and do an analysis on it, figure out what we can do, what we need to change, if we could do it.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
It's difficult, but thank you.
Next item under reports and communications is council liaison, Marion. Whoops. Can't hear you.
Thank you very much, I will try to keep it short today. We are in, starting in the middle of budgeting, well, the people, as Jeff knows, he's been working on budgeting for several months. But the council portion of the budget for the upcoming fiscal year, which is in, you know, starts in July. Those meetings happened this week, we have an operating budget meeting today, and then on Saturday, we have the capital budget meeting. Not a lot to report about that, that we did get the report from the final recap of fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. And it, and the city did well, which is, you know, is in good shape, so that's encouraging. We obviously don't know what's going to happen with the backfill. That is where the, this is the commercial properties that were lowered in terms of what, you know, they get, they, the taxes to city several years ago. The state has been doing backfill, but there's rumblings that will go away. And we have always budgeted like we don't have backfill, and we really might not this year. So that could change the tone a little bit. So the budget as proposed has no backfill, anticipating at some point it's going to go away. And with all the changes to the way taxing is being done at the state, including the state, no state taxes on certain things like pensions, things like that, IRAs from people who retired. That starts to, you know, be a concern. So we don't know what's going to happen, but anyway, it's a fairly modest budget or modest increase, but we are in really good shape as a city. So that will be going on. There were a tremendous amount of things, obviously, that came before council last year. The things like the conversion from one ways to two ways, Main Street landing, the, and the Destination Iowa budget, which I wasn't able to be with you in December. And, you know, that was granted to the city of Davenport, and there, and a, one also granted to the Figgy. And so there will be some tremendous things happening, hopefully, down along the Main Street area. This additional funding from Destination Iowa will allow us to start to finish out that area of downtown. We had already allocated some dollars for it, but it's going to allow us to finish that area out much more quickly. And then with, I don't know how much you've heard about the Figgy installation, but it is, they raised a ton of money really quickly, so kudos to them, because they had to in order to be in line for this, the state money. And it's going to be a phenomenal thing. It's not just lighting a building, it is an art installation. So that will be happening, and I say all of that because I think this will be an additional asset to downtown. I think this will bring people from other places to downtown, and I mean, that's the goal, one of the goals of Main Street Landing. And so it will be very special, all of this brought together. And that, I think, bodes well for downtown in general and the library, the downtown library, which I have a little bias for since it's in Third Ward. I love all our libraries, but I, you know, I pay attention to Maine, because it's, it's kind of where I live. I did want to mention today, well, and I, the only other thing is, I think sometime in February, I will be, I don't think it's been firmed up, but I will be doing a session on how historic preservation came to Davenport. I did a paper on this some years ago, and the things that impacted the, the city really reaching into and actually listing properties in the National Register. I kind of saw connections of things. In any case, that, I've been asked to do or be part of a presentation on that. Last September, I did a, I was asked to do something on historic tax credits, which I did. And then, so we'll see if this happens in February. So doing that on the side, given my other things. I wanted to also share this with you, I don't know if this reads backwards. This is a, this is a thing coming to the Figgy, and I don't know if anyone has reached out to the library. It's sporting fashion, and particularly it's women's sporting fashion from eighteen hundred to nineteen sixty. It's kind of an unusual, it's kind of an unusual exhibit, but it is, it is the clothing that athletic women wore, which I think, so it's about girls in sports, basically. So I don't know if there's any, any plans for any auxiliary thing, or books, or, you know, certainly, this exhibit goes to nineteen sixty. But there are certainly things that have happened beyond that. So I think it's, it's going to be really a fun exhibit, I think it'll bring a lot of people. Hopefully, it will inspire young women, young girls to, to realize there's maybe a deeper history in that than sometimes people are led to think. So I hope you get a chance to see it, and I hope perhaps we can do something to correlate with that. I am going to have to jump off probably early on this call, so if anybody has any questions for me about anything that's going on at the city, you know, or anything relating to the library and the city, I'd be happy to answer those things now. I just, I'm not sure I'm going to be here at the end of the meeting, so that's really all I have today.
Marion, we will be partnering with the Figgy, we have been in contact with them over the last week and a half regarding that, so we haven't finalized the details yet, but we should be able to participate.
Great, wonderful, wonderful, I think it'll be fun.
Yeah.
Any questions for Marion, other questions?
Marion, the tennis part of the, the tennis part of that exhibit? The one that you showed.
Yes, it's all kinds of sports, but it goes to nineteen sixty. I was thinking about Madison Keys myself, but this only goes to nineteen sixty.
My daughters speak on it.
Oh, cool, all right, yeah. It's all kinds of different sports, fencing and everything, so, so in any case, it would be nice if it went a little further and we could maybe include, you know, local, but in any case.
Jerry?
Just quick question, Marion, anyway, you can influence the owner of the lot next to the library to have him come clean it up a little bit. It's starting to look rather glittered with beer cans and liquor bottles, and it's.
Sure, have you called C Click Fix? You know, that's always available to you, I can certainly do it, but as a, you know, if you're concerned, you're seeking.
I use that all the time, and I'll go that route then.
Right, I, I mean, I'll send something as well. I'll, you know, I'll, I can do something as well, but I always encourage people to do that, if you see something, that's the point of it, it's very quick, very fast, you don't have to send photos, you can do it anonymously, but, yeah. I'm sure Kyle's probably reached out as well, but let's all reach out, okay?
Okay.
All right.
What is the line that you should call when you see issues?
It's called C Click Fix. If you go to the city's website, it is, it is, you can put it on your phone, you can put it on your computer, both. It's a very interactive, it's G I S based. You can also call Public Works, and that's always been the case, and you can find all of that information on the city's website. C Click Fix, C Click Fix also allows you now to sign up for snow clearances, road closures, all those kinds of things, it's all integrated. So, but you can always call Public Works, you can find that number on the city's website and report things as well, as you've always been able to. But C Click Fix is faster, it takes precedence over everything that comes in, so.
Just to confirm, if I might, Laura, is that you, this caller zero?
Yeah, sorry, I got on about five minutes late, so I've just been listening, sorry, it is me, yes, hi, everyone.
No, no, it's okay. Trying to make sure who we have on there. Yes. Thank you for joining us.
Yes.
Happy to be part of the meeting, sorry I couldn't get the computer to work, I was hoping to show you the little girl, but maybe next month.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Moving along then, next item on the agenda is old business. First item there is a motion to approve Administrative Policy four point one zero, Cancellation of Outreach and Programs slash Events. We discussed this at the last meeting, and we're ready to approve that, we have a motion to approve that.
I suppose second, Steve.
Thank you, Malavika, I have a motion as second to approve Administrative Policy four point one zero, Cancellation of Outreach and Programs slash Events. Is there any discussion?
Just one thing, no changes to prior, but Jennifer is here in case you had any questions specific for HR that she might be able to answer.
Any questions on that? Okay. If not, I'll call for the vote. Amanda?
Yes.
Laura? Thank you. Judy?
Yes.
Thank you. Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, the motion carries. And while I'm thinking about it, just let me back up a bit and ask that the record shows that Laura Guinness joined the meeting. Okay. Next item on the agenda is motion to approve the programming policy. We also discussed this at the last meeting, they have a motion to approve the programming policy.
So move.
Thank you, Joe, for a second.
Second.
Thank you. Double motion as second to approve the programming policy, ready discussion. Hearing Zina, a call for the vote. Laura?
Yes.
Thank you. Judy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
And my own vote is yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is president's comments. Hold up, there's excitement. No, I just wanted to mention that a couple of things, both having to do with training. Jeff sent an email about a training opportunity regarding intellectual freedom coming up next month on the sixteenth. So take a look at that, that's obviously a topic that is in the forefront in a lot of places today. Heard a story on National Public Radio this morning about a gentleman that wrote a book that's being challenged. And so, anyway, so that is a likely good candidate for training. And the other is the State Library of Iowa's online conference. This is a conference you may have, I hope, received an email about it from the state library, but it's a day-long conference that's online. And the trustee portion is in the evening from six to seven P M. And the title of that is, and this is the twenty-sixth of this month, it's, the title is Not From Around Here, Partnerships With and For New People To Your Community. And the speaker is, this evening keynote speaker is David Peters from Iowa State University, so that might be another one opportunity for some training there. But anyway, just wanted to point those out and keep ourselves well armed. Anyway. Moving along then, next item is board training, Customer Services Presentation by Steph Marvin. How are you, Steph?
Thank you, thanks for having me, I do have a PowerPoint.
Also, in your folder, there's a handout, everybody, Steph's presentation.
And that's pretty much, we're just going to go through it. So I am the Customer Service Supervisor of the Customer Service Department, and you probably see me or my staff either at the Public Service Desk or maybe on the public floor, helping patrons and maybe helping one of you. And I just wanted to give you a fuller picture of what all we do in my department, so, and how we contribute to the library. So if you have any questions as I'm going through the information, please stop and ask it, otherwise, at the end, I can also answer questions. So this is all of my team, there's seventeen of us in the department, we have one opening right now, hopefully not too long. And we work at the Public Service Desk at all three buildings, and we also work at the check-in. And, um, we work at the public service desk at all three buildings, and we also, um, work at the check-in area, which is behind the scenes at all three buildings. So, we're at the first point of contact that patrons have, um, when they come and visit the library. So, we're really the gateway between the patrons and the rest of the library. Um, we help the patrons navigate the library, and just to give you an idea of the amount of people that we see, I put up there, um, that we, that we had over 200,000 people visit the library in FY '22. One of the main things that I'm looking for when I hire new staff is, um, someone who's a problem solver, because, um, our goal is always to help the patron, and it's not always just from A to B. It's not always a straightforward interaction, so I'm looking for people who can, um, really problem solve on the spot. So, some of the things that we troubleshoot are technology, which includes public computers. That could be helping someone, um, with printing, but it can also mean helping someone just like learning how to navigate around a computer. They, they might not be familiar at all. Um, we also, um, help people on their personal devices, the Wi-Fi, and also wireless printing. We help people on the office equipment that we offer, fax machine, scanner.
Microfiche.
We don't do that. That's in special collections. But I'm sure they'll help you.
Is that still here?
Uh, yeah.
Really?
It's still a thing, yeah.
I thought that had been gone for years.
Um, yeah, well, you'd think like the fax machine would kind of be out of, um, fashion, but we help people every day. Many people use him a fax machine, so, um. One of the most important things that we do is we read between the lines about what the patron, to determine what they really want. Um, sometimes that means telling them about a service that we don't, that they didn't even realize we had. For example, our social worker, um, let me back up. Um, I was helping a patron who wanted some options for affordable housing. And so, our social workers put together a great binder so I could give them that information, but then I could also tell them about Quinn and that he could make an appointment with her. He needed more information, so, um, we're often doing things like that as well. And if we can't find the answer to a question, we're always gonna try to find someone who can. So, we know library cards. There's 12 different kinds of library cards that we offer here at Davenport. Um, we give cards to people from Davenport, from the other Rivershare libraries, the Illinois Quad City libraries, um, anywhere in Iowa as part of our open access program, and also anyone, actually from anywhere in the world, if they come in with their public library card, they can, we can sign them up to use our libraries. We have about 48,000 library cards in our system right now, and I just wanted to mention one type of card, which we started in July of last year. That's our second chance card, um, and that allows patrons who live in Davenport and owe Davenport money to get a clean slate. Um, we limit them to four items, but it gives them access to the library, and we've already signed up 38 people per those cards, so, um, I mean, we're really appreciative. Um, our department also supports other departments. There's lots of library, um, lots of great offerings that we have. Um, and because we are that first point of contact with patrons, we often are interacting with them on behalf of other departments. So, we sign kids up for a thousand books before kindergarten. We make appointments to meet Quinn, our social worker, or book a librarian. We get snacks for the kids at Fairmount from the snack pantry. We count all the pieces in the STEM kits and the board games before we check them in. Uh, we make library cards for all those first grade visits, um, over a thousand every year. Uh, and we're answering questions about programs. We're helping with outreach events. So, those are just some of the ways that we interact with some of the other departments. So, like I said in the beginning, we're at the public service desk, and we're also at check-in, which is behind the scenes, and it's more than just scanning an RFID tag. Um, so, just to give you an idea, over 500,000 items were checked out in FY '22, so most of those things get returned, and so they have to get checked in, and that's what we're doing in the back. Um, we have the help of three automated sorters, one in each building, but we're also checking some things in manually. And we also, when we get to return, when things get returned and we need to check them in, we're checking them for condition. We're also checking them for bedbugs. Um, and then we're also checking, yeah, we're also checking to make sure that all the discs are in AV case and that they're the right discs. So, those are some of the things that we do with check-in. Um, there's some extra steps involved when, when holds come in from Rivershare libraries. If they don't have an RFID tag in them, we have to program a tag and place those in the item. We also do the borrow-by-mail, getting those things raised to be mailed, which is a couple of extra steps. And any Mobius or Prospector items that come in, um, we have some extra steps to do for those things. And we also make sure that items get to the correct place. So, when something gets checked in, is it, is it a hold? Is it something that needs to be shelled? Does it need to go to a different Davenport library? Does it need to go to a different Rivershare library? Does it need to go to Mobius? So, we have to determine all those things and then get them there. One extra thing that we do at the Eastern Avenue Library is, um, anything coming in from a Rivershare or Mobius library gets sent to Eastern. Um, we did that as a cost-saving thing just to have one delivery point. So, we have to sort through all those things, decide what stays at Eastern and what's get sent to Main or Fairmount. We also, um, do some of the behind-the-scenes things with borrowing and lending outside of Rivershare. So, the library uses Mobius, which is a wonderful, wonderful thing, and I could talk for hours about that, but we do all the behind-the-scenes things with, with, um, with Mobius. So, if we place a hold on something from Mobius and it comes in, we have to go to a different screen to receive those things. If we're sending something out from Mobius, we have to put a sticker on it. We have to write the person's name on it. We have to put where it's going. If it's an AV item, we have to wrap it in bubble wrap, print out the routing label. So, just to kind of give you some ideas, it's, um, a few extra steps. And then we also continue to lend, um, materials through Silo, which is the state library's, um, resource sharing, um, is to a lot of the smaller libraries in Iowa. And just the last thing to mention is that we are continually learning. Be, again, because we're that first point of contact with the patrons, we're learning what patrons want. Um, I just wanna say thank you to Jeff, that he's made it really easy for staff to get feedback about that, and he's very responsive, um, to our suggestions. So, thanks, Jeff.
Yeah.
Um, we also have to stay up to date on programs, library offerings, updated policies. Uh, we, we train our new software products like Vega. Um, and then we also watch some of those monthly webinars that come on. I don't know if you guys have access to that, but the Ryan Dowd on Homeless Librarian is excellent resource for us. And so, anyone have any questions for me?
Um, actually, um, there's a couple of questions.
Yeah.
You had mentioned that, um, you sort material that comes back.
Yeah.
You sort between which Davenport library branch is, are our materials noted that this is a main item, or this is an Eastern item, or this is a?
They are, yes. So, yeah, we don't have to actually like scan them into the system, but we have to like physically touch most of the books. Like, Bendorff's good about putting like all of main stuff together, because there's a lot of resource sharing between our libraries. But, um, but some of the other libraries, they just stick it all together, but then they, they have a note on it about where it's supposed to go.
And it's even more complex than that, too, because we're not just talking about the three Davenport Public Library locations, too. They're also responsible for anything else that comes in to Rivershare that comes to us, that's returned to us, then getting that rerouted to the correct location for the Rivershare libraries, and then also any of the libraries that we're lending or borrowing from statewide and nationwide as well. So, you saw the, the number that was up, um, lending over 5,200 items that we lent out and, uh, 3,800 that came in. All of those items were handled by customer services.
Um, the other question, um, you mentioned that we offer, we have 12 different kinds of library cards. Are those all Davenport cards?
No. So, those are, there's, um, five different ones for Davenport card holders. Um, so like full access cards for adults and juveniles, and then we have that second chance card. We have something similar for kids. Um, and then we have computer use cards, but then the other ones are, um, like we give out Bendorff cards. So, someone from Bendorff, pardon, Bendorff can come and get a card here. We also, um, have an agreement with the Illinois Quad City Libraries Interstate Borrowing, where they can come and, and use our library. So, that's another kind of card that we do.
Okay.
Steph, what's the most challenging thing that happens for your customer service workers?
I wanna walk away all your things.
You're getting tired.
Um, I mean, I would say the most rewarding and sometimes the most challenging are the patrons. I think, um, I know, I read through some of Jeff's old, um, director reports, and so I think you guys know some of the issues that we've had here at Main with some of the patrons. Um, dealing with some of those behavior issues can be pretty difficult and, um, and pretty trying, and it's hard, because we wanna help people, you know. Part of our troubleshooting is, you know, we're trying to get people to comply with our, um, behavior policy as much as we can.
Just a quick question. You just said about, you know, Bendorff, uh, community comes here, we give a card. But, but so we give physical card, and the, and the reason why I'm asking you is because I, I've not done it recently, because I need us to get those numbers, so.
Right.
But I've taken my card.
Right, you don't need to.
Davenport card, and I've checked things out from there.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, of course. But, um, what she's referring to specifically would be if you're a resident of, of Bendorff and come to a Davenport library and you want to register, get a library card, we, because of our reciprocal borrowing agreements, we will actually log them in the system, create them, and then give them a Bendorff card, so that they can borrow. It's still a Bendorff card, but because of being part of Rivershare, they can borrow it here.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's part, that's part of what.
Yeah, because when we, I go to Bendorff, I just.
That's great.
And to the reciprocal.
Good service.
Yeah, and to the reciprocal you said, I experienced that. I went to Rock Island and I wanted a wild bag. I wanted to use the library. They called a 1-800 number here to see my standing.
Yes.
And they gave me, uh, the privileges, yeah, to check things out from there, so, yeah, thank you, yeah, for all you guys do. And to let you know, I mean, uh, we do tiny bit of Mobius, so when listening to you, I realize how complex, uh, it is here, you know, so, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's wonderful though.
Yeah.
I, I love Mobius.
Another question.
Yeah.
You mentioned putting RFID tags in
Yeah.
other libraries' materials.
Yeah.
Why do we do that?
So, we want our patrons to have a consistent experience when they're checking out to, to be able, just to like put everything on the RFID pad and check out that way.
Okay.
So, Bendorff and Muscatine both have RFID tags in their items, so that's the majority of things, but, um, but we still have to tag all the other stuff with a temporary tag in there. So, it's easier for patrons to check out.
So, the records that those tags carry are, are compatible or the same for?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it just, it mostly just has the barcode number on it.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
So, how do I change my, the whole notification from phone to text? I know there's a way to do it. I just haven't done it.
You can do it, you can, you can tell us when, when you come upstairs.
I can just go upstairs.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You can do that.
Okay.
Or you can do it through the pad, too, if you apply, or if you look at your account online.
Yeah.
You should be able to do that. But, yeah, we can just help you.
I'll just do that.
Yeah.
Done and done.
That's right.
Because they call and then they leave a message, and then I get two notifications for one book, you know. It's like, no, I don't.
So, we're gonna have, uh, signs out on the interstate that say, you wanna know about the DOT rules to call the Davenport library? That's a very interesting story.
It's one of the last things in Jeff's report.
Yeah. A truck driver, truck driver who was en route to Nebraska called the library here and asked about a specific DOT rule. And, uh, said that, I think it was Wes, said that he, you know, he said, "I was able to find it on the internet while I had him on the phone," and, and emailed it to him. And he was, he was in awe.
But smart of him to call the library.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Well, I was, I was telling my wife about this story, and she goes, "Really?" And I said, "Well, yeah," I said. Um, I had a friend who, who passed away that I knew had a cousin in Hampton, Iowa, and I wanted to let the cousin know that this woman had died. I knew she was in Hampton, and I knew her name, but I didn't know how to get ahold of her, so I called the library in Hampton and asked if they'd look it up on the phone book, and they did.
You can also use whitepeaches.com if you wanna do it yourself. I use it all the time.
Okay. And, uh, Steve, I did just wanna, uh, share one thing for, uh, customer services. They really are the front line.
Yeah.
Heart of, uh, the library. The impact almost everybody comes into and out of our facilities, and they do a lot. They have to, as you saw from that, not just the breadth, but the depth of what they do as well, and they do it at all three locations.
I was gonna ask that.
On a regular basis. Rotate between.
Well, they rotate.
Yeah. Uh, and so, at any given time, they're there on the service desk, helping somebody, either a person or on the phone. Somebody else might come in and stack up in line, and then there might be a behavior issue, and just a whole bunch of stuff that they are responsible for. And Steph, in particular, has been here for over 20 years, and this is the largest department, and under her leadership, they've really grown a lot and done a lot. Uh, and she's always working on processes and trying to find ways where she identifies friction points with, with our customers, with the people that we serve, and to try and come up with solutions that might be able to help them. And one of those she mentioned was the second chance card that launched just this last, uh, summer, and already 38 people have taken advantage of that. So, just really great things that that department is doing that, what's up.
And over the years, I've just seen so much improvement in the customer interface. I mean, just, I, I feel very pleased with it all the time now. Got out for a number of few years.
Yeah.
Few years, yeah.
The last one thing was the enjoyment to see a my daughter's face when she turned 18. You guys had special cards.
Oh, yeah.
All that. So, she opens that, and there's the wish and the confetti falling. Oh, my gosh! So, thank you. It's an excitement which crumps these young kids. Hey, you have a library card. Go get one from there. So, thank you.
Could I go back to, uh, the second chance card?
Yeah.
Uh, that is for someone who owes the city money for something else? And they can, so then they can still use library services?
It's just if they owe the, the library, I, for items that they didn't return.
Okay, all right, so.
Not like the property taxes.
Right, no.
Marian, Amanda, Laura, any questions?
No.
No?
Nope.
Okay.
Nothing.
That's a long step. Uh, I mentioned this at board table several months ago, but, um, one of your folks, uh, was going in the Fairmont Library and parked, and as I walked towards the door, in, in the parking lot, there was a car parked in one of the handicap spots, and this elderly gentleman getting out of the car, and, and, um, there was one of your people standing in front of his car and took him by the arm and took him inside, you know, helping Gary's computer. And I thought, wow, that's been cool.
Yeah.
That's a long journey. Any other questions, comments, anything else?
Thank you, Steph. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Well, you and your folks do. If there's nothing, yes, I'll be.
Steve, I just had a question.
Yes.
Can we come here on, um, next week, like we had done the?
Oh.
One, can we do that?
Yes. I forgot. Um, the, um, that's the online conference. It's part of the online conference on the 26th. Jeff has reserved this room, um, because there was an email exchange between Malavika and I about getting together, uh, if anyone's interested to, um, to watch that training webinar about intellectual freedom. And, uh, so, um, I'm planning to do that. If anybody else would like to come, um, join Malavika and I, that'd be great.
Get some snacks.
Soft, soft drinks and snacks, uh, will be available, and, uh, just, uh, it's an hour-long program, and if anybody's interested, they can watch it. And just, it's an hour-long program and if anybody's interested, watch it.
You could attend Malavika's event on Saturday.
Yes.
Bring that food.
What is she teaching? In the crowd?
I know Indian food, but I don't know the spin of Wyoming. I'm very curious.
If there's nothing else entertaining, a motion.
If I may, just to.
Yeah, sure.
I won't be at next month's meeting.
Yes, okay.
I'll be out of town. And then if you're also free this weekend in Muscatine, Muscatine Arts Council will be having its annual Eagles and Ivors ragtime festival. Which is from, it actually starts Thursday, actually starts today. But Friday and Saturday, it will be at Wesley United Methodist Church on 8th and Iowa. And music starts, there's a local band on, on Friday night, the Mississippi Mudcats will play a pre-show. And then they have all kinds of talent playing. Jeff Barnhart and his wife are regulars, but Josh Duffy's playing with a band there. And several, several, I think they have like five acts for the main show. And then there'll be an after-hours party at the Merrill. And then Saturday night, my band, the Locust Street Boys, will be playing from 5:00 to 7:00 for the pre-show. And then, of course, the main act from 7:00 to 10:00 and then we'll be down at the Merrill. So if you're free, come on down. It's really good music.
Great, Peter.
Thank you.
And live music is magic.
Absolutely.
It's, it's just magic. I don't.
There is so much talent in the community. It's unbelievable.
Sorry, that was at the Merrill on, when was it? I heard 5:00 to 7:00, but what day?
Friday and Saturday.
Okay.
Both, both nights.
And you mean the Merrill and Muscatine, right?
Right. The church first, from 5:00 to 10:00 and then 10 o'clock to midnight or 1:00 at the Merrill.
Oh. Probably a future outing, not maybe this time, but thank you.
But why?
This is what happens is I get really excited and then I'm like, no, logistically, I don't know how that would work. Never mind.
It'll last 18, 20 years.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Tom. For a second.
Second. What is that?
Motion to adjourn. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay.
I've done that.
We have, let's see, we have seven, yes, and one, no. I mean, no, I scared.
No, I said, yo.
Oh, yo.
And I said, I wasn't at the meeting and I'm like, so I was curious about this.
I just wanted to.
She said. Which was wrong also.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Steve.